Okay, we are at one minute to one, so we can get going with our next session. Which is going to be moderated by Glenn J. Corbett, who is the editor in chief of Biblical Archaeology Review Magazine and a specialist in the archaeology of the lands of the Bible, with more than two decades of excavation and field experience working on projects in Jordan, Turkey, and Israel. Prior to joining BAR, Glenn was associate director of the American Center of Research in Amman, Jordan, where he directed the award-winning Temple of the Wind Lines project in Petra. In addition, while working as program director for the Council of American Overseas Research Centers, he spearheaded efforts to help preserve threatened archaeological sites in museums in Yemen and other countries ravaged by conflict. So I will hand over to Glenn for this special session workshop on publishing forums.
Well, thank you very much for the nice introduction, Megan. And it looks like we already have quite a number of participants for the special workshop. So no, it's really a pleasure to moderate this session workshop on publishing platforms, which is really geared towards independent scholars and researchers who would like to learn more about publishing venues and platforms that are out there for folks who might want to publish their research, maybe even outside a traditional journal or book publication, other platforms that might be out there that you might be interested in. So we're very fortunate that SASS has brought together representatives from five different publishers, organizations, platforms that you might be interested in. And during our session today, you'll hear from each of them what their organizations are about, the types of things that they publish. And each of them will tell you a bit more about the publishing process, the editorial process, and ultimately how if you want to get your work published with them, how you go about doing it. So this should be an excellent hour and a half. I'm really looking forward to it. The way we've set it up is each presenter will give a very brief presentation, and each one will follow after the other. Hopefully, at the end, we'll have about a half hour, hopefully a little more, to take audience questions. And you can either use that when we get to that time, you can either raise your Zoom hand to ask questions with your mic and your video, or you can use that Zoom Q and A function as well to ask your questions. But yeah, other than that, I would just ask especially for those attending, if you could just keep your mic and your camera off during the presentations, that'll just facilitate the short presentations we have. And then, yeah, the Q and A will have everybody sort of chime in to discuss and ask questions. So with that, as we're already up to well over 20 participants, so that's great. So I'll go ahead and introduce our first speaker for today. Just getting out my bio screen here. Our first speaker will be Stephanie Buden, who is the editor of Near Eastern Archaeology, a journal of the American Society of Overseas Research, or ASOR. She is an ancient historian who focuses on gender, religion, sexuality, and iconography in ancient Greece and the Near East. Her published works include several titles, including Free Women, Patriarchal Authority, and the Accusation of Prostitution, published in 2021, Women in Antiquity: Real Women Across the Ancient World, published in 2016, and Artemis, published in 2015. She's also written numerous articles on ancient religion, gender, and iconography, including most recently a blog post that she wrote for our website as well, which was really great. She has also lectured widely in North America, Europe, the Middle East, and Asia. So with that, Stephanie, I'll turn the Zoom audience over to you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Excellent, always checking. Okay, hi. As Glenn was kind enough to point out, I am the editor of Near Eastern Archaeology, which is the more popular print publication of ASOR, the American Society of Overseas Research. Meaning that contrary to base or the more formal and larger publication, we do shorter articles, generally with much glossier pictures. So it ranges from armchair archaeologists, as you might call them, all the way up to very hardcore archaeologists in the field and back again. So that is the range that we're generally looking at. So I was asked to talk a little bit about getting published in journals and that sort of thing. So I'm going to start off with one statement, and I'm going to end again, if I remember, with the same statement. So making certain that I get this out very clearly to begin with. In modern times, and definitely with NEA, and this is now the standard practice throughout journals, academic journals, peer review is normal, all right? So all articles have to be reviewed with NEA, it has to be at least two peer reviewers. Some articles of journals will have maybe up to three, two is normal. And the normal practice nowadays is to have what's known as double-blind peer review. What this means is the author has no idea who the peer reviewers are, and the peer reviewers have no idea who the author is. Now, the reason that I am saying this is there was concern for people about, well, what happens if you want to publish and you're not in a standard academic path? You don't have tenure, you're not working with the university. And what I'm here to tell you is, when your article is going through peer review, no one knows or cares. Who you are is completely irrelevant because it is anonymous. Articles are judged exclusively based on their content. Nothing is known about the authors themselves. So if that is something that holds you back or makes you nervous, allow me to assure you, no one knows or cares who you are when they are reading your manuscript. All they really care about is what you're saying, are you saying it well? And am I personally in your bibliography? Probably not in that order, but trust me, those are the three main ideas that are going through these people's minds. So don't worry about yourself, where you are in your career. Always and only focus on the quality of your writing. Okay, so like I said, that's where I'm starting, and I'm hopefully going to end with that, if I remember as well. Because I tend to babble an awful lot, and I forgot to keep track of how long I'm talking. So somebody will probably tell me to shut up at some convenient point. All right, so that said, there are a few other things I wanted to mention about publishing, all right? After that first bit about the peer review and the anonymity, is the fact that, once you write your article and write a good article, write a focused article, have something to say in your article, always, you know, make good use of your primary sources, all the stuff that you probably remember from whatever writing workshops or that sort of thing you have ever done. Write a good article that really says something meaningful. Once you have done that, you're trying to find a place to publish it. Look at descriptions of what different journals do. You want to make certain that you are in the appropriate time phase. Near Eastern Archaeology goes up to the late Middle Ages, by which we mean our cutoff point is the rise of Islam. So don't send me something about 17th century architecture, all right? It's already out of our field. Make certain the geography is right, the time is right, and this is really important, folks. So write it down if you're taking notes, make certain your word count is right, all right? If you read that a journal accepts manuscripts up to no more than 5,000 words, don't send them a 10,000 world manuscript, they're just going to reject it. So really pay attention to those things. So always look for the guidelines for authors, the instructions for authors. There's going to be something like that on any URL, any webpage for any journal, and see if it is appropriate for the article you have written. So that is really the first and most important thing to look at there when you're deciding where to submit an article. If they tell you you need a certain number of images, they need to be colored, they need to be black and white, take all of that into consideration as well. This is really going to make things so much easier for the editor when deciding whether or not even to continue processing your article, well, excuse me, your manuscript for submission. Because keep in mind also that we have to ask people to do peer review. This is a favor they are doing for us. People don't get compensated for peer review, at least not normally in academia. This is a favor, and we don't want to stress their patience or abuse them in any way. So if I look at an article and I say, yeah, this is never going to get through peer review, I don't even bother sending it out because I don't want to waste the time, patience, or good resources, or goodwill of our potential pool of reviewers. So keep all of that in mind. So make certain your article fits, that's point number one. Point number two, now, this is very specific to archaeology, but I figure that's why you asked me to come in, because that's what I'm doing here, and it's the ancient world. So if you do literature, this isn't as important, but if you do archaeology, this really is. This is the only time that who you are actually matters because there are protocols involved with who gets to publish what when it comes to excavations and artifacts that come from excavations. Control of an excavation, including its publication, is reserved exclusively for the head of the excavation team. It is that person or really that group of people who decide when and what and how to publish a site. And until that group of individuals publishes the site and all of the artifacts that have been found, you don't get to. No matter how much you want to, and no matter how long it takes to happen, this is simply one of the rules of academic archaeological publication. So you went out to watch the dig at a Tellbite near some this summer, and it was really exciting, and you took a whole bunch of photographs. And you now want to write an article about the cool stuff that they found this year before the actual head of the dig does, you don't get to do that. And if you try to do that, your manuscript will be rejected automatically. So please keep that in mind, and I know how frustrating it can be. I work a lot in classical archaeology as well, and there are some folks over there in Greece who excavated a site 20 years ago, and they never published it, so no one gets to write anything about that particular dig. It's frustrating. There is a museum in Thermos in Greece where not a single one of the objects has ever been formally published. So you're not allowed to take any pictures in the museum, you're not allowed to draw sketches of the objects in the museum because of this. So keep that in mind, that is the only time when who you are and what you have access to becomes really relevant. When it comes to objects, if it goes into a museum and still has not been published, you still don't get to publish that object. The Adityo Prinkaps, as it is called, the first publication of an object, is reserved for an individual, you need permission to do that. Now, once things get published, go for it, have lots of fun with it, write your article. But keep in mind that that is a very important bit of protocol, and your editors and peer reviewers are going to be very severe about it. So that's an important thing to keep in mind, at least for archaeology and art history. Really, really avoid things that have been looted and do not have proper provenance. That's going to be topic number three in your list here. Again, this is relevant for art historians and archaeologists. But so many things have shown up on black markets, wound up in a museum, potentially through uncertain circumstances. And academia really frowns upon giving any attention whatsoever to objects that come to light this way. So if you do not know that this object specifically came from, an academic excavation has been published properly and is in the appropriate museum in the appropriate way, be very leery of it. And the sad thing is that there are certain museums that don't always have the best track record with the provenance of their objects. So Begatti Museum, perhaps, I'm sure some of you might have heard about this, that every couple of years, there's a new object that they have to repatriate, or they have to explain how they wound up with. So be very cautious with the history of your objects, even if you know that they've been published. If the provenance, if the origin is questionable, really give it a good birth, unless you are specifically writing about this problem in archaeology, art history, and publication. So that's just a bit of advice of things you want to say, stay away from. All right, since this comes up very frequently, images, that little part where saying, how many images do you need, and photographs? This is always really difficult, especially with the rise of Wiki Commons. So do I have to get the museum's permission to use this image, do I not? People at my end and our lawyers are still trying to deal with all of this. So really quick words of advice here, it's the difference between 2D and 3D images. If it is flat, like a painting, you really, really need the museum's permission to use it. If it is 3D, like a sculpture or a figurine, the individual photographers have some choices to what angle they wanted to use, and this way or that way, and I want to see if I can get the light a certain way. At that point, it's an individual work of art on the part of the photographer, and the photographer can claim the copyright for the image and grant it to you via Wiki Commons. So when looking to illustrate your articles, like I said, anything 3D on Wiki Commons, you're probably going to be fine, anything 2D, it's probably going to be more problematic. So those are the bits of advice that I can give you when it comes to submitting a manuscript and giving its best chance of getting published with little problem. And I'm going to end, as I said, I was going to end with, remember that ultimately, it's peer review, and it is double-lined, and no one knows who you are who wrote it until it comes out. So don't worry about who you are, always just focus on writing a good article. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie, an excellent overview of some very key points. I also especially like the reference you made to images. I know at BAR and Bible History Daily, we're constantly sort of questioning our image use and what's appropriate, what's not, and so thank you very much for bringing that up. So quickly move on to our next two presenters from New Classicists. We have two editors, Jordan Houston and Giuseppe Picacelli. Jordan is chief editor at New Classicists. His work reconstructs the financial aspects of the organization of Roman entertainment between the first century and the third century AD through various techniques, in particular comparative studies and globalization. Giuseppe is also chief editor at New Classicists. He is currently a PhD candidate in Classics at the Institute of Classical Studies at the University of London. His research examines the economic history of Roman aristocratic wealth from the third to first centuries BCE, and how it influenced the political process. So with that, Giuseppe and Jordan, I will hand it over to you guys to arrange your presentation as you like.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Alrighty, let me pull up these slides real quick. Okay, so yeah, as Glenn mentioned, I am one of the editors in chief at New Classicists. I represent the early career side of things. And Giuseppe Joey, who is also in the audience today, and I'm sure he'll chime up once we get to our Q and A session, represents our postgraduate side as an active PhD student himself. So who are we? New Classicists is a double-blind, peer-reviewed academic journal that's run by postgraduates and early career researchers. And really, what we set out to do is to highlight this exciting new research that's coming from postgraduates and early career researchers. We kind of define that as five years post the PhD. And we kind of want to be the safe educational space for what most of our authors are first-time publishers. So we really do go through a lot of process on helping you get your article to a point where we think it's going to have the best possible chance in the peer review process. And yeah, and that, you know, you kind of learn what is acceptable, what isn't acceptable, and how to really efficiently publish an article in pretty much every other peer review journal out there. We don't only publish Greco-Roman and Egyptian stuff, while that is bread and butter, and a lot of articles do relate to that area. We do also have articles to ancient India, ancient China, and really, we kind of accept anything archaeological, literary, artistic, anything like that. As long as it refers to the ancient world, we're happy to take it on. So how do we work? Essentially, the author sends in their initial draft to our submissions coordinator. They will go through the draft and give you any initial feedback. And really, the purpose of this step is just to make sure that your publication covers as much of the basic points and that we know that once it goes out for peer review, it's not going to get kind of shredded to pieces because of some really obvious mistakes or typos, grammars, that's grammatical mistakes, those sort of things. And this will kind of go back and forth as much as it needs to until our submissions coordinator believes that it's up to snuff, essentially. Once they're happy with that, that'll be assigned on to an editor who oversees the double-blind peer review process. As Stephanie mentioned before, it's completely anonymous. So your name doesn't go out to them, and their names don't go to you. It's really just about the content of the article and the validity of the discussion. Once the, so once the article's been assigned to an editor, this will go out to, they will then secure two peer reviewers. We usually are looking for established academics who have a good history of publication. And the people that are not only going to know the topic very well, but also going to know sort of what the other scholarship in this area is saying, and what a good article for your topic should look like. This process can take about eight to 10 weeks, so this is a very lengthy process. So you can't expect to send it in at the last minute and get it published in the next month or so. It does take time. We do about two issues a year, and we have submission deadlines that are about six months apart, just to accommodate this. And then, once both editors have submitted their feedback, the author will be sent a copy of both feedback forms that we get, once again, completely anonymous, no names, anything like that. And you'll be asked to resubmit your article according to that feedback, and you get given about a month, a month and a half for this process. Once you've resubmitted, the editor will send the article for a second round of review to only one of the original reviewers. And this is really just to confirm the changes and to pick up any last-minute corrections, anything that may be missed the first time, or if you, depending on your changes, if there's anything that just needs to be corrected or fixed up on your amended copy. Once again, that's eight to 10 weeks, doesn't usually take that long, since it's really, like I said, just cleaning up. Once that's been, that feedback has come back to us, that they'll once again go out to you, and you're given that month, month and a half to make those changes. And then, after that, you're pretty much done. Once the final article has been received, we send it off to our proofs editor, and then they prepare it for the final publication. And yeah, and you'll see it in our next issue. So what are some tips for getting reviewed or published? Stephanie covered a lot of the big points, honestly. One of the big ones that we do suggest is that you really, before you even submit, you go to your supervisor or even your mentor for feedback about your article. They're usually more than happy to have a read of what's going on, and they kind of know where's the best place to publish, or what's the best way to improve this paper, and really get it to a point that it's going to really shine in publication. Another way of doing that is really reading similar articles around your topic and just getting a feel for what the writing level or the discussion level is. And that's really what we're expecting. We do get a lot of submissions that almost feel like essays rather than articles. And so we do, that's why we have that generous amount of assistance right on the front end, just to help you kind of get the feel of what an article should be, at least in that draft stage. But this isn't always the case for a lot of journals, you know, it is a long process, and we don't, not every journal can be expected to go through every single submission and kind of polish it up like that. So really, it's best practice to get your articles refined as possible before submission. And the big one, when I was the submissions coordinator at New Classicists, was really proofread, proofread, proofread. You can never edit something enough, it's never going to be perfect. So you might as well get it in as good a shape as possible before it goes out. And then the final thing, and Stephanie touched on this as well, was writing according to the word limit. If you've written a very small article, we accept articles up to 8,000 words. And if you've only used about 1,000 or 2,000 words of that word limit, make sure to use that word, the extra space. You know, it can only improve your discussion and help your argument. But don't, make sure that you don't exceed it either. The reason why we do have it is so we don't get, you know, very long, lengthy articles and things that may stray from its original point. So it's kind of a fine balance there. Make sure to stay close to the limit, don't feel that you have to write 8,000 words necessarily. But yeah, but don't go over either, we will know. Yeah, so those were all the sort of small tips that I have for now. I suppose I'll pass it back to Glenn.
Thank you, Jordan, those are all very helpful tips. And I have to say, I especially very much agree with your, first of all, that, especially with BAR, a popular magazine, I often tell our authors it takes six to eight months usually before we sort of settle on a manuscript idea all the way to publication. So it takes a long time, and also definitely emphasizing the proofing aspect. The number of times we read and reread and reread what's submitted, it's an impressive amount. So definitely always prove your work thoroughly. It will make the job of the editors that much easier. We'll go on to our third presentation now from Sapiens, the online magazine. We have Kerwin Cornelius, who is the Archaeology and Biological Anthropology Development Editor at Sapiens. She works with anthropologists trained in academic writing and helps them tell stories that are compelling, clear, and relevant to broad audiences. She is also a freelance journalist whose writing has appeared in Scientific American, The Atlantic, Medscape, Outside, The New York Times, and Sapiens. Kerwin.
Can you hear me all right?
Just fine, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. It's been so interesting hearing the other speakers because the way Sapiens operates is so different. So our mission at Sapiens is to bring anthropology to a broad audience. Of course, we have many archaeologists, anthropologists of various sorts reading Sapiens, but our target audience is actually people who are not academics, or at least not in that specific field, but who are intelligent, curious, well-informed people who just are interested in knowing about this field. So our articles are journalistic in style, meaning that we, again, we assume that people don't necessarily know anything about the subject. And therefore, each article has to be calculated to tell the reader immediately why this article is important, why it's relevant to them and their life, and especially why they need to read it. And then basically, every paragraph after that is calibrated to get readers to read the next paragraph. So we do that through compelling storytelling, evocative description, you know, interesting questions, thought-provoking comments, things like that. So it's just, it's very much geared toward getting people to be interested in the article and keeping their attention, because we all know there's so many distractions on the web especially. And so that's kind of the focus. Our articles are not anywhere near as long as some of the other publications. So they can range from anywhere from about 800 to 2,800 words. Usually, they're more like 1,500 is kind of where we like to keep it. When you pitch us, we actually, you don't send the full article, unlike the other publications. You send, if you pitch through our website, sapiens.org, and you pitch an approximately 300-word pitch, which is just kind of saying, like, here's the story. So you might just start with, like, you know, an anecdote or a story, or a sort of news peg, or anything like that, and just kind of say, you know, just tell us in a very short period of time, here's what I want to write about, essentially. And then we respond and might say, that sounds good, but could you start with, should we start with an anecdote about this? Or we really like this part, can you enhance that, this part? And that part, we feel has been done a little bit too much. So, you know, when you turn in your draft, could you emphasize this and reduce that? Or, you know, we'll give you directions usually, and how to submit it. And then, at that point, you submit the article that's been kind of geared toward our discussion. So what are we looking for? We do, we don't do any breaking news because we actually work on a fairly slow, you know, process. We're a small team, and we put a lot of thought, and we go over it many, many times. Oh, I should say, there is no peer review process, but there is a, like a fact-checking process, and it does get looked at by multiple editors. On extremely rare occasions of something that's quite controversial, we might run it past other experts in the field, but that doesn't usually happen. So there is no peer review. But, so we don't do, we don't do breaking news, but we do write about recent papers. So if you have a paper that's coming out, or, you know, you've just been researching something and you want to tell people about it, that's fantastic, we certainly accept that. And what we usually are looking at for that is kind of the back the backstory. Are, are there, are there certain stories about your interactions with the people or the place or something that might bring something to light? And, and reveal something about the big picture that's going on or the effects of, of your research or how it's related to other research and how that is evolving, the way we think about a certain issue, just kind of maybe things that either wouldn't make it into a normal academic paper, um, because maybe they're a personal story or something like that. Then we, you can expand on that as long as it's clear why, why that's relevant, um, to people. And it's not inside baseball type thing. So we also publish a lot of articles inspired by current events. So I'm working on one right now, um, inspired by Roe v Wade on the archaeology of personhood and, um, abortion. Um, I mean, I'm editing it, the, the archaeologist pitched it. And then we recently published something on the anthropology of smell, uh, inspired by people losing their loss of, the, losing their sense of smell because of COVID. So, you know, with, if something's happening in the Ukraine or something, you know, we'll, we could publish articles on that. And it doesn't necessarily like, you don't have to have necessarily a new paper about that or new research about that, you know? It, it could just be like, I've studied this in the past and here's the insight I can bring to this current issue based on all my previous knowledge and previous research in this particular area. So if some issue comes out in, I don't know, Jordan, if something, something's happening there and, you know, you can say like, I have researched this area and I, yeah, I can bring, you know, illuminate some, some aspects of this issue. Then we're all about that too. So, um, what, uh, we also do, um, commentary and op-eds, um, which kind of exist on a spectrum. So, um, I assigned one recently, um, uh, after the, um, English Heritage projected the image of the queen onto Stonehenge. There were some archaeologists that were in, in a bit of an uproar about it. And so I commissioned an article basically, talking about, uh, how images, ideas of nationalism have been projected onto Stonehenge. So that could be something like that. Um, and then, um, oh, I just, I just published one on, um, Neanderthal art. Neanderthals get a bad rap and, and, and new evidence comes out all the time showing that perhaps maybe they actually did art and were more advanced than we think. And so this person is essentially, this, this archaeologist is essentially defending Neanderthals and saying like, yes, this is art. Um, so, um, that kind of op-ed. We also do book excerpts. But only if the book is geared toward a popular audience. If the book is geared toward an academic audience, then we wouldn't publish an excerpt of it. However, there may be an opportunity to do a, um, a spinoff essay inspired by it. Um, and sometimes we actually do both. Sometimes we'll publish an excerpt and then we'll publish, um, an, an op-ed, uh, aside it. So, um, for example, um, Kara Cooney, uh, an Egyptologist, um, had a book called The Good Kings come out. And, um, so we, we published an excerpt of that book and then she did, um, an op-ed alongside it. Talking about sort of angry reaction she's gotten, um, uh, from the patriarchy about, in, in response to, to that, that book coming out. Um, and we also do personal essays. Um, I'm, I'm working on, uh, one right now. Um, it's a beautiful essay from an archaeologist whose father died. And she excavated his, uh, study. And at exactly the way an archaeologist would excavate something and she labeled everything and put everything on a grid and had a, had a blueprint, like she used all those principles in order to find out things that she didn't understand about her father. And it was just a wonderful way to explain how archaeology works to people who don't know how it is, but in a, in a really emotionally moving way. We also do photo essays, um, and even poetry. Um, and, and in terms of the photos, um, we do welcome submissions of photos from people, but typically we actually find the photos ourselves. So it, it, it goes both ways. With us. Let me see. Pitching, I think. I think I'll leave it there. I think that's probably probably good.
Thank you, Kerwin. And that's, you know, it sounds like Sapiens covers a lot of material, especially for, you know, making the worlds of archaeology and anthropology available, available to a popular audience. And so it sounds wonderful, all of the different ways y'all are able to explore that with your authors. And I'm sure we'll have questions for you later. All right. Our fourth presentation. From Open Book Publishers, we have Rupert Tagani, who is co-founder and director of Open Book. He is a fellow of Trinity College in Cambridge, where he is, uh, director of studies in economics. His published academic work includes microeconomic analysis of competition and online markets, game theory and search theory. He has held visiting positions at MIT and the University of Florence, acting, uh, acted as an economic advisor on several EU competition studies. He's on the advisory board of a range of open access initiatives and speaks frequently on the open access movement. Rupert, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Glenn, and everybody for the invitation. Um, so yeah, although I'm an economist, um, clearly that's not why I was invited here today. It's more about, um, open access book publishing and particularly to talk about the, uh, the book publisher that, uh, I co-founded, um, with Alessandro Tosi, who unfortunately couldn't join us today. So let me share screen. And I think probably the easiest thing is if I just go to the website and we just chat about, uh, you know, the thing about open access is that everything should be accessible. Uh, so this is always one of these tests, you know, it's now that the, uh, that the, 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 everything, um, you know, dies or, or, uh, you know, the, the, the website doesn't work for some reason. But anyway, so hopefully, uh, people can see that.
Yes.
Open Book Publishers is a open access, uh, academic book publisher. We're a nonprofit organization set up by, uh, some scholars based in Cambridge in the UK. So I, I recognize that there's quite a lot of differences between ourselves and, and, uh, the other speakers that we've heard. So first of all, of course, we publish books, academic books, and we can go back, uh, a little bit to some of those. Second is, uh, that they are all open access. And that's something I'm, I'm happy to talk about more, but open access is becoming increasingly common part of publishing in academia. Now, it means that the works themselves are available for free online so that they can all be read, uh, online in their entirety for free. And it also means that they come with some sort of, uh, creative, in our case, with some sort of Creative Commons license, which allows various degrees of sharing of the content. So at the very minimum, somebody could share the PDF that with, with other people, uh, costlessly and without, without need for any permissions to do that. We heard about some of the copyright issues with images and things earlier. So if we, um, uh, just, just scroll down for a little bit. So we've published, um, about 250, uh, titles so far. And, and I, I guess the, the key thing about open access, as soon as you start making material available online for free, surprise, surprise, there's a lot of demand for it. A lot of people are interested in accessing materials and a little frustrated by the ability to access high quality academic works when they've got large pay, uh, paywalls to them that are preventing access. Uh, and so that's one of the motivations and one of our key motivations is to make this accessible for people, not just in the elite universities, but, but generally around the world. And just to put a little bit of perspective on it, there's been quite a few reports coming out recently, looking at academic book publishing. The typical university press, uh, book, uh, published, you know, uh, high quality, peer-reviewed academic university press, uh, book has sales of around between 2 and 300. So that's, it's tiny. It's, it's tiny sales. Uh, and so it, 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 the, the ability for global audiences to interact with that material is very limited. Uh, as we will see, uh, is when, when you put things online, suddenly the interaction with it and accessibility of the work becomes increasingly, uh, by orders of magnitude, larger than that. And we can have a look at that in a second. So, uh, open access, uh, has got, at, at some times there's funding models that require authors to pay for publication, but that is not a funding model that we use. So authors are not required to, to make any payment for publication. We have various forms of, of revenue that comes through. We get, make revenue from the sale of the printed works. Uh, so our works come out both in, in printed paper, paper, traditional books, but also in various formats, digital formats. So we make, we do make some money out of the sale of the printed works and that goes back in to fund further publications. We also have a library membership scheme where over 200 libraries around the world, uh, uh, sponsoring the activities that we do through a membership scheme. And that gives us, uh, about a third of our revenue comes from that, a third from the various sales. And a third of our revenue comes from, from grants that authors might be able to apply for. So that although we don't require authors to pay anything, we do say, you know, if you know of a grant and you could apply for it, then that would help us offset, uh, our publishing activities. And about a third of our revenue comes through from, from grant funding. Uh, and we do work with authors to apply for grants as well. So we, uh, are a very, uh, as far as the quality assessment, we've heard about peer review, uh, uh, we follow a fair, fairly standard, um, peer review process. Possibly a little bit more rigorous than, than, than many, um, uh, book publishers. So we typically ask for the manuscript, the, and we ask for the entire manuscript, which we send out for peer review. Uh, as we've heard before, we send it out typically to two peer reviewers. Sometimes it might be three, but typically it would go to two peer reviews. We do a single blind process. So we heard earlier about the double blind where, where neither the reviewer knows the author or the author knows the reviewers. With books, that's not so common. Uh, and in fact, it's single blind. So the reviewer is anonymous, but when the book goes out, they, the reviewer is made aware of the, of the author. Having said that, and, and, and to go back to the, um, concerns people might have for, for, you know, non, for independent scholars, we really do support, uh, independent scholars and early career, uh, researchers. We've got a large number who have published with us. And in fact, one of our, um, uh, initial, uh, founding directors, uh, called William Sinclair, who fortunately died last year, but he started himself as an independent scholar and, and then moved into academia later on. So there's a very, you know, very, very strong commitment that we've got to support independent scholars, uh, in, in their publishing. So, uh, if one, once one can see, uh, you know, we publish across a whole range, we, we're across, across a whole range of disciplines. But as far as, uh, and so you can see the sorts of things that we publish. You know, we could look at some of the series if you, if we, if we wanted some of the categories, maybe you can see that we've got, uh, a, a, a large range of categories. But some that might be particularly appropriate here would be things like, like that classic series. Where we have a range of books, uh, some of them studying particular issues such as, you know, the, the, the Hotter Stones and in, um, ancient theory, uh, um, ancient Athens and, and, um, and others are more textbooks. Uh, and, and each of these, you can go in and have a look, um, and, and see, you can, you know, you can read either HTML versions or PDF versions online. You can download various types of digital works. With an XML version as well for people that, that are interested in, in, in accessing that, the, the code in that format. Uh, and of course in, in, uh, paperback and, and, and hardback editions as well. And then you can look and see the types of, uh, and, you know, if you want to just cruise the website and have a look, but we have things like usage metrics, you know, so this was a book that was published when in January, um, and it's had, you know, 400 downloads from the OBP website. Another hundred readers, you know, more from away from Google Books and places like that. So you can see that we've already got, you know, best part of a thousand readers. Who are, who have engaged with the, with the work. Which is far in excess of what you, one would expect in a, in, in a printed work. Um, and, and other books have clearly, um, uh, much more than that. So the other thing that I might just quickly, uh, um, mention, uh, you know, there's other series there that we've got a Semitic series, uh, which looks, has got works, you know, dating back from, you know, the first, first millennia anyway. So, uh, there, there's lots of, lots of, again, um, early ancient, um, studies, uh, books in that series. I, I just also just, uh, would like to mention it while, while I'm here that as well as, uh, typical, you know, book text images, uh, we also have quite a number of works which have embedded other digital materials such as as, as music or, or music files or videos or things like that, which can be embedded into the digital work. For the printed works, we create a QR code so that you can scan it on your telephone and access it through a mobile. Uh, and so these are the, the, we're, we're very interested in engaging and, and pushing out the boundaries of, of what is traditionally, uh, conceived of as a book. To embed lots of extra, uh, material, 3D images of, of, of an artifact, for example. All of these types of things can be embedded into the works to enhance the nature of the engagement with the audience, which is of course the point of, of the point of the exercise. Okay, uh, so, uh, any other points that we, that I had to do peer review process, the copyright rules, we can talk about open access. Later, it's quite a big topic, but, um, uh, but the copyright of the works remains with the author. So for us, it's very important that the publisher does not take the copyrights. So the copyright of the work remains with the author. What we ask is for a non-exclusive license to, to publish the works in the various formats that we do. The submission process and things like that again can be, there's lots of information. We've got to publish submissions, information for new authors, et cetera. Uh, there's a, there's a, there's a tab there. Uh, it's a fairly standard, you know, to, we've got a, a, a form, uh, that we would ask people to, to, uh, fill in and submit about the nature of the work and the audience and, and what you're wanting to do with it. And, and, but just an email to start with, uh, is, is also a useful first point of contact. Okay. That's probably my time.
Thank you.
Happy to take questions later on if, if, if anybody has any.
Yeah, I'm going to break my own rule. Just ask a, a quick follow-up question. Is, are there various, uh, strategies for promoting and advertising the books other than the website? Do, I mean, through university libraries or what, what are the portals by which you get word out about the books?
Okay. So, so, uh, open access works, it's, it's, uh, you know, that's wonderfully easy. Because there's no restrictions on access to the work. So we use a lot of social networks. Um, we also put it through all the traditional, uh, distribution channels. So the printed works, uh, go through all the traditional, you know, the, 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 um, Gobi is the, is the standard thing that goes through to libraries. But also all of the works are listed on WorldCat. Uh, there, there'd be hundreds of libraries that get access to the metadata for the works that go into their catalogs. They're on Google Books, they're on the Internet Archive, they're on, they're on, uh, there's a directory of open access books in OAP. So there's about 25 different platforms that we put the books, that we distribute the books out to, so that they can be broadly accessible. Uh, and when it comes back to those metrics, as, as, as maybe you were alluding to, you know, we don't get the metrics for an awful lot of those places. So we don't know how those books are being accessed. They're just out there, um, you know, uh, EBSCO is doing its stuff with them. And, and well, Google Books we get back from, but, but other places, uh, Hafiz Trust, we don't. And so there, there's, there's lots of, lots of places, uh, Internet Archive, we don't get, uh, data back from them either. So, you know, there, there's, um, lots of, of platforms where they're available and accessible of it, that, um, yeah, that's open access that goes out there. It's distributed by Twitter feeds by people saying, hey, look at this, you know, um, uh, there's the link to it.
Certainly a different world than it was 15 years ago. That's for sure. Very good. Thank you, Rupert. So we'll move on to our, uh, fifth and final presentation for the workshop. From the World History Encyclopedia, Jan Vanderkam is the founder and CEO of World History Encyclopedia. One of the world's most read history publications. Uh, the organization's mission is to engage people with cultural heritage and to improve history education worldwide. He's worked in the field of history-related digital media since 2006 and holds an MA in War Studies from King's College London, as well as a BA in Journalism from the University of East London. Jan.
Thank you very much for the introduction and thank you for inviting me to speak here. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, share my screen shortly. Um, give me a second. There we go. Sorry. All right. So here we go. Yeah, I just want to, uh, quickly talk about World History Encyclopedia, who we are and what we do, why we do it. Yeah, I just wanna quickly talk about World History Encyclopedia, who we are and what we do, why we do it, and how you can get published with us and why you might want to. So we are a nonprofit organization. We are also an open access publication like some of the others before. And for us, really, the kind of the tagline that we have that we we kind of present is history grows the mind. We think that history in all the academic fields actually takes a very special place because it is the the one kind of discipline that truly informs how we understand our cultural identity, our national identity, and how we see other cultures, right? It it really has an impact on exactly that. And obviously, that changes the way we see the world. Which is why, for us, the mission is to engage people with cultural heritage and to improve history education worldwide, as Rupert just said. Now, you know, be because the historical importance, sorry, the importance of history for understanding our cultural identity and so on. We think that history is something that is not just an academic discipline, but it should really be for everybody. Because the more people know about history, the more open-minded and less xenophobic our culture and our world can be. I mean, we can look at, you know, what's happening in Ukraine to see how different understanding of history and cultural identity actually causes wars. We can also look closer home, for example, in the United States, where there are very serious discussions about what is acceptable to be taught in history class in high school, you know, particularly related to slavery and certain censorship potentially going on, right? Now, the more people understand history, the less they can be influenced by politicians and pundits who like to use and misuse history for their own, you know, political gain. Which is why we think that open access, which we consider ourselves an open access resource and an open education resource. Open access, we think needs some redefinition. Open access isn't just about it being free and freely available. Open access should very much be also about being accessible. By that, I mean that not only should it be easy to find and to 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 get to. Many journals that are open access are still very much hidden in university libraries. But it also needs to be understandable for the general public, the layperson. Because only once the laypeople can understand it, they can actually make use of it. And so we see ourselves a bit as the bridge between those two worlds, the the world of the general public and the academic world. Because obviously, there's a place for academic publishing. It's a very important thing. But there should be the complement of speaking to the public, sharing research and knowledge with the public. So that's kind of that bridge that we see ourselves in. So shortly about us, we're a nonprofit organization. We've been around since two thousand and nine. And we are one of the most read history publications in the world, not just on the web, but in general, I think. So, yeah, we are mostly run by volunteers, but we have a core team of about ten employees, soon eleven, who work from all over the world. We don't really have an office and we, you know, run this with a small team. I'll talk a little bit later on how we managed to do that. But lastly, a little bit more about our readership. So in the last twelve months, we had around thirty million individual people who read articles on our website. And at the moment, we have around three thousand three hundred eighty articles published. We have a large media library with images, maps, videos and 3D models as well. And over six hundred eighty people have contributed to our encyclopedia. So now I want to talk a little bit about the publishing process. So first of all, our publishing platform is custom-built from the ground up. And it is due to this that we are able to do this with a small team. Basically, the way it works is that our platform will, you know, submissions come in through a platform. Our editors edit it in that platform. And then once things get published, the platform will also automatically figure out which articles it should link to. Everything gets interlinked automatically. And our editors, though, inform those links as well through tagging and keywords and so on. The same is true for the search. So the search obviously is done by the machine. But again, our editors have a strong influence on how the search delivers search results. So we are trying to operate this kind of hybrid platform where our editors guide the computer in order to put everything together in a very lean team, thanks to the automation. Now submissions, who can submit? Well, so we accept submissions from scholars, obviously, who are somehow qualified in fields of history or archaeology or have relevant experience. We also take people who are not in historical fields. For example, if there's an economist who writes about something historical related to economies, then that's fine too, of course. Submissions to us don't cost money, so it's not like an open access publication that charges or anything, but we also don't pay. So it is simply free to publish with us. And as I mentioned before, all the submissions are handled right through our website. We also accept book excerpts. So we work a lot, for example, with Oxford University Press and get excerpts from some of their books. In exchange, we also promote the books, obviously. So there we go. Now, once something is submitted, it goes into editorial review. So this is not a double-blind peer review, anything like that. It is an editorial review, much more like, you know, what we saw with Sapiens magazine earlier. And our editors take great care to make sure that everything is accurate, of course, we fact check, but maybe even more importantly, we also check that it's engaging and easy to understand. Because, as I said, open access is great, but we need people to actually want to read it. And so our editors work with the authors to make sure that everything is easy to understand. And we publish for everyone. So for us, the readers are the general public. And as we're an encyclopedia, we are being used very much also by school students who might be fourteen years old or older. That's kind of the target audience we look at. We are aware of some students who are younger as well, but we we don't aim younger than that. And it's it's really important to to keep that in mind because students at school, they might not care about history. They might not even want to read about it. They might be forced to do so. So for us, it's really important to make sure that it is not boring. It is easy to understand that we can pick them up and get them interested. And of course, at the same time, we hold all the publications to a rigorous academic standard to make sure that it is high quality, so that teachers are comfortable recommending it as well. So we like to say that story is the key part in the word history, which is why, you know, we don't just list facts in our articles and we work with the authors to tickle out the interesting stories. Again, very similar for what we heard earlier about Sapiens magazine. We want to make sure why these things matter and explain the context and ideally relate it as well to the present day, make it relevant. And again, our editors work to source the images we and and create maps, sometimes even for it. We have graphic designers and find videos, etc., etc. Of course, we also accept submissions from the authors themselves. If they've taken photographs themselves, that's entirely fine as well. And we can accommodate that too. And then, once something is published, we also promote it. So we have a large social media following, closing in on a million followers at the moment. We have an email newsletter with over twenty seven thousand subscribers. And since about a year ago, we started doing push notifications as well, which is people who subscribe get a little pop up on their phone, a little notification. Hey, there's this new article. Do you want to read it? And you can just click on it. And that's working out really well for us in terms of getting people interested. Finally, we also translate articles. Not every article necessarily, but we try to translate as many as we can into essentially all of the languages of the world. The two biggest languages for us apart from English are Spanish and French. And our team of translators obviously continues to expand that. So at the moment, about twenty percent of the readers are reading not in English, but we expect that to grow to about fifty percent in the next year or maximum two. Because, yeah, as I said, we are rapidly translating and that is adding a lot of new readers to our website at a rapid pace at the moment. Because obviously, English is only going that far on a global audience. Now, speaking of a global audience, authors who publish with us, they can reach a very wide audience. And I picked a picture of a football stadium, which is not something you would usually associate with history. You know, Rupert earlier said that the typical university press book gets about two hundred to three hundred sales. Now, we're talking in completely different dimensions here. So most articles published with us will gather tens of thousands of readers quite quickly, essentially filling a football stadium. And some of our authors have reached over hundreds of thousands of readers for their work. Obviously, not every article will attract an enormous audience, but it's entirely possible and very common. And what we do as well is we provide the authors with the stats on how many readers they've had and so on. Because we are aware that in some countries, particularly in the UK where I am at the moment, academics have to kind of prove to the university that their work had public impact. And that's what we want to provide. We want to provide that public impact for academic work. And that is a complement of to publishing in journals and books, which is very important and has its place in the academic world because it's driving research forward. But we are we are essentially trying to be that complement to drive that public engagement. Finally, we are a respected publication. I hope many of you know us already, but you know, many institutions recommend us, Oxford University, the School Library Journal. We've been peer reviewed by Merlot Two and Common Sense Education, and many, many others, universities, schools, libraries. So, you know, you're in you're in good company here. So write for us, don't be shy, you know, tell your world about your research or your area of expertise. People want to know about it. And I think when, you know, when people are used to publishing in academia, you know, they are used to small numbers, like two to three hundred readers. These numbers are very small. You'll be amazed at how many people actually want to know about your work. So there we go. That's us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jan, for that very good presentation. And I just had very one quick follow-up question. And maybe you mentioned this, but do you actively seek for for new submissions, new stories in certain subject areas? Since you are an encyclopedia and covering such a wide swath of of topics and time periods? Or does it just kind of develop organically in terms of the content?
Well, we do seek submissions actively on specific topics that we are about to cover. So we generally work in the sense that we look at the global curricula in schools. So we have a big database to know what subjects are covered. And so we kind of want to take those off first. Now, we sometimes approach academics specifically where we know that that academic might have a specific, you know, specialty or expertise in the subject. But more often than that, academics will come to us and they will just write about the thing that they happen to know about. And in that sense, it does grow organically. But for example, we have one academic, she's a professor from Pittsburgh and she writes about religious, ancient religion. And so with her, because she's a regular contributor, we work to cover very specific areas of within her field to make sure that the key things that people we know are interested in are actually covered. And we also have a needed content list, so it's on our website. And also people can just write to us and be like, hey, this is my specialty. What do you want me to write about? We get that sometimes.
Well, thank you to all five presenters who gave wonderful, you know, overviews of their organizations and their publishing platforms. I would now invite everybody who's comfortable anyway to turn on your camera, at least your camera, so we can see everybody who's out there. And, yeah, we'll begin the Q and A portion of this. We have just a little bit less than a half hour to go over any questions or comments that people have. I don't see it in my Zoom, but if there's a raise your hand function in Zoom in your Zoom interface, you can use that and I can call on you. Do we have that? Am I seeing hands? I've seen hands clapping, but I haven't seen a raising. But so or you can use the Q and A chat function as well. If you want to use that to ask a question. So are there any questions out there for any of our presenters? I have a few loaded up in case we need them. I definitely want to give it over to the audience first. There's a raise hand function in reaction. Does anybody see any raised hands on?
Yeah, there's one raised hand, I think from Heather, no?
Okay, there.
Yes, I'm demonstrating the raised hand function.
There it is. Yeah, you're in my upper left. Okay, please ask your your question.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to this amazing panel and thank you to Sasa for organizing this. So I am approaching this from the perspective of an independent scholar. Several of the panelists were explicit that independent scholars were welcome to submit. So I just wanted to see if there was any hesitation on the part of any of the panelists. I noticed Kertakwen on Sapiens on your website, it says that you're interested in publishing anthropologists and specifically affiliated anthropologists or current students. So I'm just wondering if that is if independent scholars should submit to your publication. And yes, that's a question specifically for you. But and you know, there's no judgment here. I mean, every publication can apply its eligibility criteria however they want. I just want to know for the purposes of a resource document I'm putting together for independent scholars, which publications are open to independent scholars? Okay, so that's one question. Another one is, you know, if if you have experience working with independent scholars who are submitting, are there any you know, specific issues that have come up that we should be aware of as we're submitting? Is there, I mean, I I'm not, I don't really know what issues there would be, but I thought I would ask this expert panel if you have seen things come up when you're working with independent scholar authors that don't come up with academics or vice versa.
So I'll just lead off since with a question for me is, yes, we do accept. So I I think I can't remember how our website phrases it, but it's like you have to have a degree in anthropology or be affiliated with an anthropology department. So if you have a degree in anthropology and you're an independent person, then that's totally fine. And it's just, it's really on a sort of case by case basis, but but you're absolutely welcome to pitch. And I don't recall any issues ever arising. I don't know. I don't know either what what issues would potentially arise with independent scholars. It's I, as far as I'm concerned, everyone's welcome. It's all, it's all good. Yeah, I know I'm doing I'm doing a Q and A right now that I'm actually, I don't normally write for the website, but occasionally I do. And I and I'm doing a Q and A and one of the people that I am interviewing is independent. Yeah, he has a degree in anthropology, but is not affiliated with anyone. And I was like, he has, he has really interesting things to say. And he's worked with some some interesting indigenous communities and it's worked perfect for the article. So it's totally fine with me.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. Yeah.
I can maybe add to that as well. Sorry. I can maybe add to that, that from our experience, we we publish independent scholars as well as affiliated scholars. But we have noticed that quite often, independent scholars are actually easier to work with because they have less red tape. And also, quite often, they are a little bit less in deep in their subject in the sense that they are less academic about it in a way, which for us is a good thing because we write for the general public. And so there's less editorial work on our end to make it good for the general public. I'm not saying the quality is any better or worse. I'm not saying the quality is any better or worse, it's just the writing style is often easier for independent scholars.
Super interesting. Thank you.
And the other panelists want to chime in about that, whether there's any particular challenges or issues that come up when dealing with uh submissions from um non-traditional scholars or independent researchers?
I can, I can pitch in to just say, I I I don't think really, really uh very many. I mean, I I I must say that most of the independent scholars that we've published have got um PhDs or equivalent. So, you know, they know when it's going out to a peer review, we're an academic publisher, we're looking for an academic work. You know, that's, that's very different to the work that Jen's um just been discussing, you know. And so there, there's a different style and different, you know, detail, footnoting that's required. But, you know, most people uh who have done PhDs know about that. So it's not, it, you know, there's really not a, not, not an issue there. We do occasionally get, you know, a- as you'd expect as a book publisher, we do occasionally get completely wacky things that have kind of blight mine. Um, and uh, and, 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 and so we do a a disc, we do a fairly serious disc um uh assessment uh early on to decide what to send out to peer review and 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 whatnot.
Somewhat related question just appeared in the chat is uh among those publishers here, do are there opportunities for people at the undergraduate or maybe sort of immediate postgraduate levels or master's degree students to publish in these forums? Again, is it, is it more just the nature of the search and the quality of research? Or are there certain minimum um educational requirements?
Um, for new classes, at least we do, we do accept things from master's students. Um, so I I, we don't really look at anything that's from undergraduates, we'd point those to other directions. But um, yeah, the immediate postgraduate, we definitely provide opportunities for that. And it's more about the quality of content there rather than if you have a PhD.
Um, at Sapiens, we typically don't go below master's degree. However, that's not like a one hundred percent no. I mean, we we would, we would consider um a really strong pitch i- if there's expertise in in a field, it would, it would be on a case by case basis, but it would be unusual. Um, however, I mean, there are also many publications that are, I mean journalistic publications that obviously don't care that, you know, there's not, you you don't have to have a degree to be, to publish in in journalism. So, you know, there are plenty of 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 other things like Smith-Somian or, you know, um, or or that route that that you could publish um and and say that you have a degree in that, and that might help you, but you would still have to have a very compelling pitch and um and and show that you have expertise in this area. Um, but um, but it would still be, it would still be possible. That's, you know, journalism is open to to pretty much anyone with a really, really strong idea. So I I, when I was, you know, getting my my master's degree and I didn't, didn't have it yet, I turned in one of my homework assignments to the New York Times. So it happens occasionally and it got published. Um, so you never know.
Can I just quickly add, add one thing? So we don't, we don't uh typically ask for a CV. So we've got no idea whether people, you know, what their educational background is um uh when the book comes in. Um, however, specifically, we do not publish uh PhD theses in immediately. So uh, so we would ask for some revision from a PhD thesis to to create the monograph um rather than just the publication of the PhD thesis. Um, and then, you know, as I said before, you know, I I uh, one of our funding directors, um, you know, did not have a PhD, didn't have master's degree, you know, it just was uh um a a very good scholar. Uh, and so, you know, that this is neither necessary nor sufficient condition.
Well, for us, uh, we tend to look at uh completed bachelor degree and above, but again, it's not a strict rule. Uh, and another thing that we uh tell people who don't have necessarily the experience of the background is that we also publish things that are not necessarily fact-based. Um, in the sense of, you know, a report about, I visited this museum and this is what I have to say about it, or this exhibit, an exhibition review or a book review. These are all things that somebody who is an undergraduate student can easily do. And we would be happy to publish those without question. It's just when it comes to the, you know, like having encyclopedic definition on something, then, yeah, we want to be sure that it's good. Doesn't mean you have to have it necessarily, but it would be good if you did.
At NEA, we publish original research and generally at that level, you you don't have anything quite original enough for significantly meaningful to say about it. Really let things incubate, give yourself time. Uh, you don't want to write something really bad when you're kind of young and then years later look back and go, oh my God, what was I thinking? Because I can assure you that's going to happen anyway, but you want to deal with the degree of humiliation that your future self is going to be feeling looking back. So remember, scholarship is a timely, whiny process and it's going to take you a while even past a degree or whatnot to get to the point where you really have a grip on what you think you're talking about and what you think you understand. So you need to give yourself time to ferment.
Uh, Anne actually has a a good question. I think that a lot of you can speak to is um do you have any advice for early career scholars on how to turn their dissertations into an article or a series of articles or an actual published monograph? And I don't know if one of you, maybe the the book publishers can start with the monograph and then the the journal folks can deal with sort of maybe breaking it down individual articles. So Rupert, do you want to take a first stab at that?
Um, so uh typically what we would say for somebody who'd had a a dissertation, um, a PhD dissertation has got it, you know, the first chapters of PhD dissertation are, you know, I I need to prove that I've read the work, I've read my background and I need to, you know, justify that, that, you know, that I've really read all the stuff. A lot of that is is not going to get, is not particularly useful uh in in the, in the final uh research monograph publication. Um, and so we would be looking for the the person, uh, not necessarily to completely rewrite it, but to really focus about, okay, now your audience, instead of being three people uh who are going to decide whether or not you get a degree and therefore you've got to prove some credentials and and that things. You've now got a slightly different audience that you're addressing. And so the question is, how would you want to be addressing that broader audience? What's the information that they would find useful and engaging and bringing them in? And that could be that there needs to be, you know, another section that might really help it, or it might be that you want to cut things, change the way that things are written a little bit to make it uh ju- ju- just thinking about the audience, you know, I I think it's, it's important that one writes, writes for an audience, you know, you you you've got something to say, you want to say it, you want people to understand it, but you need to understand who those people are, you know, and how would they want to be engaging with it? What's the information that you can do? And that's probably the same for for all the various publishers. But, you know, with books, it's, it's, you know, that why would anybody want to read this? Um, and and what's the material that you want to bring in to do that? And so it just requires a little bit of a focus rather than here's me showing off with my credentials. Please give me a PhD, which, you know, it's a, it's a very different sort of mindset, I think.
Jordan, Giuseppe, Stephanie, did you have anything you wanted to add, especially on more the turning sort of larger dissertation um level manuscripts into articles or individual article?
Um, personally, I would say don't, or at least wait a very long period of time before trying to do it. Because once you've finished your dissertation, you know, it it has eaten your brain. Um, you are too close to the topic. So it's very hard for you to write about it in a way that a person outside of your brain can understand. There's too much that you're taking for granted that you think is expressed, that is not expressed. And you cannot get into the mind of someone who isn't in your brain to see it from an outside perspective. Um, I've seen a few too many articles that people submit and it doesn't get through peer review. And part of it is that, well, you know, you didn't address this and you didn't address that. And I I wind up getting the rather uppity response of, well, it's in my dissertation. And I always want to say, no one's reading your dissertation. You have to write an article as an integral object in and of itself. So you need to give yourself time to get away from it secondarily, and this is something that freaks people out. Um, you cannot summarize your dissertation. You cannot summarize a chapter of your dissertation. If you want to take your dissertation and generate an article from it, you get one sentence from your dissertation and you turn that sentence into an article. And if you try to do anything more than that, it's not going to work. So give yourself time, focus on something else for a while until you can come back at it. And it's like, uh, a bit more objectively and a bit not eating your head and take one sentence, maximum two, and see if you can turn that into a good, well-written, tight, integral article, but nothing more than that.
Uh, Rupert and Stephanie made excellent points, and I would just um add just something from a, from a, just a writing structure perspective. Um, one of the most common things I see um it from people who are used to academic writing, who are tr- turning in an article to Sapiens, is that they begin the article like they would begin a dissertation with the introduction. Here is the background, here is the whole history of this, this story. That doesn't actually keep readers' attention. And so we always tell people, start with an anecdote, start with a story. And I would say that if you're trying to conceive of a way to um to turn your anecdote, your, your dissertation into something, start with a, start with a story, which may not even be in your dissertation. It may be some story that happened outside, you know, I'm thinking of one of our, one of our researchers, um Sophie Chow, who who works with the Merind Indigenous uh group in um West Papua Indonesia, and I, she did her dissertation on them. She, she knows everything about, I don't know her specific topic. But um, one of the stories she wrote for us was about how, how this group adopted a wild animal because there'd been loss of habitat and things like that. That wasn't in her dissertation. But the story of this moving of this, of this animal that she encountered during her research um showed just how um, how poignant this was that, that, that animals were losing land and people were losing land and all of this. And so that was like something that came out of her dissertation that wasn't really in it. So think story is sort of what I would, would add to that.
And if I might just say one more thing, um, with the dissertation, the focus tends to be on showing what you know. When you're writing, you want to focus on conveying information. And these things are so radically different from one another. Because when you're trying to impress people, you're using all the jargon and all the shibboleths, and you're trying to sound extremely uppity and precocious. And when you're writing for, you know, normal people, you want to convey ideas and you want to speak their language and you don't want to intimidate them the way you want to think you're intimidating your dissertation group. So just the way you think about the writing is so radically different. So keep that in mind as well.
And I would say just from my, my own experience too, I often tell our authors who are, you know, senior leading professors, like, don't take our editing personal, you know, it's, it's really, we're just trying to communicate to our audience what you want to say. And typically academics write for their own audience, they write for their peers, they write for their colleagues. In our case, we're just editing their work to make sure it's digestible and accessible and understandable to just the, as I like to say, just middle America. And so uh often you have to tell people just, you know, we're, we're not trying to critique you, we're not trying to um, you know, tell you you're a bad writer or no, it's just we're trying to help you communicate. So. Um, very good. I think somebody else wanted to make a point.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to add there as well that uh sometimes when adapting things like a a dissertation or or a thesis, you know, the the theses in particular, they're, they're quite long and have a lot of tangents. And and sometimes, you know, you have one large general topic, but to make that, to make that argument, you need to build up with lots of little things. Whereas with an article, you know, you've got a lot less space to work with there. And so what I really recommend and the way I think about, you know, adapting these things myself is is really just picking one, one thing out of it and going with that and keeping it focused. Or or even just choosing an interesting tidbit that you discovered along the way that didn't actually fit within your dissertation, but kind of stuck in your head. And and it's just, it's, yeah, keeping it, you know, manageable to the word count and and, yeah, exactly right into the audience.
We have one more question in the chat, and I'm gonna, James, by by chance, do you mind turning on your, at least your mic? And then, because I don't, I don't want to garble your question. I'll, I'll try to, but it's in the chat. But basically, if I understand James's question correctly, it's sort of in regards to those journals that have a double-blind peer review process. The idea that academia is basically really a rather closed group of people who basically know of each other and can therefore, even if it's not formally explicitly made clear, who the reviewers are and who the authors are, that that people sort of know. And is that a legitimate critique, I guess, of the double-blind review process? And James, I hope that reflects a accurate representation of your question.
Sometimes it depends on what the topic is. If it is an incredibly niche topic, and especially if the author has written about it an awful lot, then people will probably be able to guess. But it is a guess. Beyond that, uh, you will have things, remember how I said before that only people in charge of the excavation are allowed to publish the excavation? Well, if someone is publishing about Halas Sultan Tekke, the peer reviewers are going to guess, huh, it's probably Peter Fisher or one of the excavators at Halas Sultan Tekke. And they are going to be right because no one else is technically allowed to do it. Uh, something more general, uh, something potentially more art historical is going to be harder and harder to guess. So unless you have an amazingly identifiable writing style, believe it or not, no. Uh, the, the blind is in fact very blind. And I've seen enough uh misguesses when someone says, oh, so-and-so wrote that, right? Like, nope, not at all. And I once had a colleague who thanked me so much for this positive review I wrote of the book he did. And I had to say, sorry dude, that, that wasn't me. He's like, but it had to be. It sounded just like you. The person had a sense of humor. Like, I don't know who it was. So there are enough mistakes to indicate that, no, blind is truly blind in this case.
Yeah, I I absolutely agree with that. Um, we have had a few cases where we do send uh, you know, proposals or abstracts out to, to reviewers and they've kind of said, oh, I may have heard of something like this. Um, and exactly, they guess. Sometimes they're right, very rarely they're correct, in which case we probably wouldn't go with them. Um, but yeah, you'd be surprised. It's, it's a lot harder than it sounds, really.
Could I just add one thing? The, another part of that question was suggesting that, you know, colleagues could be uh helping each other. I think very few journals would ask a a colleague from a, from a, and uh the same institution or a known colleague to be a reviewer. And and and, you know, if, if for some reason, you know, you don't know who everybody knows, but it, it is fairly common for a reviewer to come back and say, actually, I know this person, I shouldn't be the reviewer. So, so it, it, no, it's, it's not really a a a closed net. I mean, there's lots of problems with, with peer review, as, as we all know, but, but, you know, th- there's also, there's a lot of, lot of care that's taken to make sure that you don't get those little closed groups or peer reviewing each other.
That's good, David.
Hi, thanks. Um, thank you all for your time today. Um, it's really been great. Um, I think an important question is, how do you um decide what the line is between something that's um publishable in in terms of its idea? Um, or that's not publishable, meaning that is too far away from the scholarly norm. How does that process work?
How well do you argue it? Um, as someone who publishes an awful lot of things that are very contrary to received wisdom, uh, you have to be amazingly explicit in your use of primary sources. And it is the argumentation and the data and the organization that is going to determine whether it's this really whacked-out theory about where Noah's Ark is actually located. Okay, that's partially a joke there, but biblical archaeology, you get stuff like that. Um, as opposed to, you can look at someone like Joan Breton Connolly perhaps, who had a radically new idea of what the Parthenon frieze actually represented and got it published, and I think won an award for that and did very well because she was meticulous with her data wrangling and her analysis and her presentation. So anyone can come up with a, what seems like a wacko theory because it goes against the currently received wisdom, but the currently received wisdom is frequently wrong, by the way. And it always needs to be readdressed, but you have to do it very carefully and very well and always, always go back to those primary sources. So at least that's how I would make a call like that, either for an article or for a book or anything else. So at least that's how I would make a call like that, either for an article or for a book or anything else.
For us, it's a bit different. If it's not the consensus, we don't publish it. Because we're an encyclopedia, we have students in high schools using it. If a student comes back with some theory, then they might get a bad mark from their teacher and we can't have that. So we will publish it when the consensus changes, but that is not our job.
At sapiens, the approach would be more like what Stephanie does. So we would publish, you know, something that would be controversial as long as it's definitely backed up. So.
I would say the same for new classicists. I think the, when I was editor, the first paper, I was involved in the process for the double blind review. One of the reviewers said, well, I don't really agree with the argument, but it was well argued. So yeah, go, go ahead. And I mean, I told the, the author, you know, that's a great compliment, actually, that the person actually didn't actually, you know, agree, but said that it was well argued. So yeah, no, I would agree with Stephanie. It's just about argument and how well you argue it.
Well, everybody, it looks like we are now at 2:30 and based on the Sasa conference program, I think that's actually time for a much bigger thing, which is the keynote address. So I want to thank all of the, the really wonderful panelists during the session. It was a great pleasure for me to moderate as well. And I really enjoyed it, really enjoyed getting to know a lot of my colleagues and editors and publishers and other venues. So I really appreciate your time and I'm sure for the audience, if you want to get in touch with any of these folks, I'm sure Sasa can make their emails and contact information available to you. And yeah, I hopefully will do this again sometime, David, right? All right. Thanks a lot, everybody. Enjoy the keynote.